It is six o'clock PM. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, from nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Posey.
Present.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responded casualty list for the period of August 17th through September the 6th, 2022. Police Officer Caesar Etcheverry, Miami Dade Police Department, Florida, entered watch August 17th, 2022. Firefighter Logan Taylor, Oregon Department of Forestry, entered watch August 18th, 2022. Special Agent Jose Perez, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Florida, entered watch August 20th, 2022. Police Officer Ivan Lopez, Mount Vernon Police Department, Alabama, entered watch August 22nd, 2022. Sergeant Robert Blaine Schwartz, Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Oklahoma, entered watch August 22nd, 2022. Sergeant Harold Lee Russell II, Tennessee Highway Patrol, Tennessee, entered watch August 23rd, 2022. Detective Matthew Walker Blynset, Marion County Sheriff's Department, Tennessee, entered watch August 23rd, 2022. And Constable Deborah Martinez-Garrabee, Pima County Constable's Office, Arizona, entered watch August 25th, 2022.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Chief Stegelmeyer, you have a couple of presentations today.
Well, good evening again, Board. Tonight's a very special occasion. On behalf of the Police Department, I get the opportunities tonight to square in two new officers and promote one from within our ranks. So first of all, I'd like to thank all the family and guests and all the other esteemed visitors that are here this evening. For those of you that are here for other than the squaring in, please bear with me for just a little bit. We'll get through this presentation as quickly as we can and get on to other business. Before I ask Mr. Newell to administer the oath of office and myself introducing the two new officers and getting forward with the promotion, I have a tradition, and that's to explain certain things about becoming a police officer. And being a police officer to this day is a tough job, but it's still a very, very honorable profession, and it's something I've done for the last 40 years. And quite frankly, I don't know what else I'd do. Coming to the police officer, the new guys tonight, since they're brand-new police officers to the field, you're going to receive two badges from me this evening. And those badges are very, very important. It has to do with the history and the integrity of the profession to start with, and I'm going to explain that to you. The first badge you're going to receive tonight is worn on the hat. This badge right here. Hats worn upon your head, like so. The reason why that's important is very, very clear. The reason why we put that badge on top of the hat and it's worn on your head is we need you to use your head to make clear, good, non-biased decisions in your day-to-day operations as a policeman. The second badge you receive is worn upon the left outer garment of your uniform. And it's no coincidence that it's placed above your heart. We place it above the heart for the main reason that we need your heart to be pure. We need you to go with compassion, and we need you to always do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. Not always easiest, but it's always the right thing to do. I need you to remember that as you start your journey with this Police Department. I'm going to hold you to that tradition and honor each and every day. Now, having to say that, now comes the good part. I get to introduce my two newest officers. Nolan Hook, could you step forward, please? Ian Dalton, could you please step forward? Stand right here, sir. Turn his face towards the crowd. They can see your brief face. There you go. Ian, stand right here, please. Let me first introduce to you Mr. Nolan Hook. Nolan comes to the Miami Township Police tomorrow from the Monday Correctional Program here in Montgomery County, where he's been employed for the last five years. Nolan is pursuing a Criminal Justice and Social Work degree from the Sinclair Community College, and when Nolan is not working, he enjoys going to Norse Lake, and we all, with his fiancee and his two daughters. Nolan is joined here tonight by his fiancee, Taylor Julian, daughters Autumn and Chloe, parents Phil and Jennifer Hook, and the in-laws Jason and Heather Julian. And thank you, family, for being here. Ian Dalton, this gentleman right here. Ian comes to the Miami Township Police tomorrow from the Dayton Mall Security Force. During his employment with the Dayton Mall Security Force, Ian received the Above and Beyond Award from the Miami Township Police Department for performing CPR on a person serving a medical emergency at the mall. This action helped save that person's life that day. Ian graduated from the Green County Police Academy in March of 2022, and in his spare time, Ian enjoys spending time with his family, occasionally going back to Canada. Yeah, I like that place too, Ian. Very nice. If I could have the people responsible to help pin and square the people who can come forward, Mr. Newell.
Okay.
I, Ian Dalton.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Resolutions of Miami Township, Montgomery County, Ohio.
And the Resolutions of Miami Township, Montgomery County, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my position.
Discharge the duties of my position.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the Miami Township Police Department.
For the Miami Township Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard, you two. This is going to be a long journey, and I hope, hopefully, Godspeed. It'll be a safe journey for you all. Scott Miller, come forward, please. The second part of tonight's festivities for the Police Department is to promote one from within its ranks. I couldn't be more proud of this gentleman right here. Scott Miller came to Miami Township Police Department in 2005 from the Village of Lockland Police Department. During his career at the Miami Township Police Department, Scott has been assigned to the Patrol Division as well as the Detective Division. Scott is an Army veteran serving as a military police officer from 1988 to 2015, and during his service time in the Army, Scott has had four combat deployments, including time in Kuwait, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Scott retired from the Army in 2015, having achieved the rank of Sergeant First Class. Pretty impressive. Scott's formal education includes a bachelor's degree in Business and Technical Management from DeVry University, and Scott is joined here tonight by his parents, James and Linda Miller, sister Jessica, and daughter Samantha. Can I have the people that are going to be swearing and pinning come forward, please?
I say your name.
I, Scott Miller.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Resolutions of Miami Township, Montgomery County, Ohio.
And the Resolutions of Miami Township, Montgomery County, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my position as a police sergeant.
Discharge the duties of my position as a police sergeant.
For the Miami Township Police Department.
For the Miami Township Police Department.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Scott. I'll get it back to him. I'm going to tell him you told me to keep it. There you go. Congratulations, Scott. Now, Scott, I know you like to get tired to escape out of this, but you're getting promoted. You have to come say a word.
I'd like to thank the trustees, all the department heads, chief, my family, my police family. Just say it's been a long road, ups and downs, and as Officer Olinger knows, and Officer Snowden, who's not, who's in Lebanon at the moment, but a year ago, somebody tried to shoot both of us. So, big difference a year makes, and I'm happy that we're all here and happy and safe, and just want to thank everybody. Thank you.
With that, we'll take a moment to excuse those of you here for the celebration so far to downstairs. There might be a little more celebrating to do. Congratulations to our new officers and to Sergeant Miller today. on the agenda is the consent agenda. I move that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Next item is new business. First is Resolution Number 72-2022, a resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of said property. Chief Stegelmeyer.
Good evening, Board. You have all the information in your packet. This was a seized vehicle we had. We put into service for a short period of time. This vehicle has now outlived its usefulness for the Police Department, and we would like to reduce this and dispose of it according to our policy and through the Ohio Revised Code. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Next item is Resolution Number 73-2022, a resolution to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into an equipment trade-in agreement. Mr. Schweickert.
Good afternoon, Board. In your packet, also the revised memo that I sent today basically explains that the mowers for the Parks Department are ending their lifecycle, and this is an agreement to, instead of surplus the equipment, to trade in to get maximum value, and be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Any questions regarding our mower upgrades? Resolutions Number 74 and 75, Mr. Carlson, a resolution to appoint township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors, and a resolution to appoint township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Technical Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Board. As members of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, Miami Township is able to appoint representatives to both the Board of Directors and Technical Advisory Committees. Traditionally, for the Board of Directors, the primary representative is an elected official. The secondary can either be an elected official or the Township Administrator. Ron Hess previously served as the secondary for the Board of Directors. With his departure, Township Administrator Snyder has expressed interest in that appointment at the Board's discretion. And then for Resolution 75, the Technical Advisory Committee, Andrew Rice was previously appointed as the secondary to that board. Mr. Rice has since departed Miami Township, and actually, I am appointed as the primary representative for the Technical Advisory Committee. In internal staff discussions with Public Works and with Administrator Snyder, Public Works Department felt that it would be pertinent for them, representatives from the Public Works Department, to be appointed to this board. The Technical Advisory Committee often reviews public infrastructure grant opportunities that are coming down the road. They review other public infrastructure paving projects throughout the county and throughout the MVRPC region. So Mr. John Schweickert and Mr. Wesley Wade, representatives from the Public Works Department, have expressed interest in appointments to this commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions? You also have Resolution Number 76-2022, a resolution to authorize the execution of a project management and financing agreement.
Thank you, Board. Resolution 76, related to a project management financing agreement that has been prepared by the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District. You have a draft of this agreement in your packets. In order to extend Washington Church Road south from the intersection at Washington Church and Austin Road, a project management agreement would be entered in with both Miami Township, Washington Township, and the TID in order to extend Washington Church Road south to facilitate the development of the airport property industrial park that is currently approved as part of a planned development at the Dayton Wright Brothers Airport property. There are several property owners involved in this. Miami Township, Washington Township being jurisdictional, have a jurisdictional responsibility. City of Dayton is the property owner on the Miami Township side, a private owner on the Washington Township side, North Point Development, Development Group has an option on the property. So with all these parties involved, the project management agreement would facilitate all land transaction items related to making this road extension a possibility. As part of that, the TID has prepared a budget that was presented in the packet. At the August 30th meeting, the Miami Township and Dayton Jed voted to reimburse the township for an amount not to exceed $12,500. This would cover Miami Township's share of the TID fees, including potential engineering related to enacting this agreement. So passing this resolution would allow the Township Administrator to enter into this agreement. We have continuing conversations with the TID on some of the individual budget items, but this would allow us to execute that agreement. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions? Next resolution is Number 77-2022, a resolution to approve an amended appropriation of Police Department funds for 2022. Mr. McCord.
Good evening, Board. Resolution 77 is a transfer from the personnel line of the appropriation for the Police Fund Number 209 into the other expenses appropriation line. In talking with Chief Stegelmeyer, we identified some additional funds within his salary line item, and in order to make that budgetary change, it does require legislative approval from the trustees. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We also have Resolution Number 78-2022, a resolution to authorize the costs and expenses of a lighting district to be assessed as provided for under the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 515.
Yes, Resolution 78 will be the enacting legislation to assess, or to instruct the county auditor to assess the, each parcel owner down within Austin Landing, the annual lighting charges from the vendor. I can't think of the name of the vendor right now. Lighting source, AL. And they cannot assess it directly like mechanically. They require the township to come in and pass a resolution authorizing the assessment. So this is an annual event we do every year for that particular lighting district.
Any questions? Lastly, Administrator Snyder, you have Resolution Number 79-2022, a resolution to enter into a contract with Mazanac, Raskin, and Ryder Co., LPA, for legal services.
Good evening, Board. Resolution 79, 2022, is intended to provide us with the ability to retain counsel for a former employee of Miami Township pursuant to Section 2744.07 of the Ohio Revised Code in the event that such counsel is not retained by OTARMA. This resolution has been prepared under advisement and recommendation of our law director, and additional information is provided within the language of the resolution.
Any questions? Thank you. We will now move to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents and guests of Miami Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please note that this time has been set aside from the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration, but the board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to five minutes each, and if you'd like to approach the podium, state your name and address. You may go in whichever order you prefer.
If, one, one second. If you're here about the zoning case, that'll be later.
I'm sorry. Yes. I appreciate that. There is also a zoning case on this evening. If that's what you're here to speak about, you can hold your comments to those times. You'll be re-invited then.
Good evening, Board. Administrator's name is Matthew Turpin, 6600 Jamaica Road, Miami Township. I'm here again in front of you to bring to the attention of the board again that continued actions of the Stony Hill Banker Club over on Myersburg Road, 7757 of Myersburg Road, and to remind you that the area over on the other side of the river is continued, has continued to be under barrage from parties, noise, lights, et cetera, at the facility, and that we are continuing to have our voice here against mine alone. It's mine alone. I'm concerned about my property guide. I'm concerned about my safety. I'm concerned about the continuing actions of the event center, and I hope that we can continue, or the board, Miami Township, can continue to keep this on the forefront. So potentially the issue that has invaded over area over on the other side of the river will maybe cease to exist under an injunction that I believe is currently in place. Do you have any questions? I'm willing to answer any questions. We have another event this weekend after the injunction, after all of the items that have been sent down from Montgomery County Court from Judge Skelton, from whomever, from wherever, but it's continuing regardless of what has been brought out from the judicial system. Saturday evening was again the wedding celebratory activity that interrupted the peace of quiet. Me and my evening, and the evenings of individuals around us. Any questions? Well, let me ask.
Thank you for continuing to bring this to our attention. For those of you listening at home and maybe haven't seen the Dayton Daily News, there was a contempt order issued in the case last week by Judge Skelton, finding Mr. Paulette $50,000. He did not issue the portion of the order that was requested regarding securing the property, but the township continues to pursue the avenues available to it with regards to the existing injunction, the contempt orders, and other information as it comes to light. As I've mentioned in a previous meeting, there's also an action by the county pending, and it's just getting started. They finally got service on him. There is quite a bit of active litigation involving this property, and until a court issues an appropriate order, we're kind of limited by what we can do, but we are continuing to pursue this as it continues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public comment period, the open public comment period? We'll now move into consideration vote of resolutions and motions. I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 72-2022, a resolution to declare surplus property and to authorize the sale of said property. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 73-2022, a resolution to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into an equipment trade-in agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 74-2022, a resolution to appoint township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 75-2022, a resolution to appoint a township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commissional Technical Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 76-2022, a resolution to authorize the execution of a project management and financing agreement. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
I'm staying.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 77-2022, a resolution to approve amended appropriation of a Police Department funds for 2022.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 78-2022, a resolution to authorize the costs and expenses of a lighting district to be assessed as provided for under the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 515. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 79-2022, a resolution to enter into a contract with Mazanac, Raskin, and Ryder, LPA, for legal services.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I make a motion, excuse me, that we open the public hearing for zoning case number 457-22. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 457-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will give a presentation. All proponents will speak. All opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When speaking, please give your name and address for the record. The board will then review and record the findings of fact requirements for this case. The board will then close the public hearing and make a final determination on the findings of fact. The board will make a motion on the resolution concerning this case. The board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Will you please review your report at this time?
Thank you. Good evening, Board. The only zoning case before you tonight, ZC 457-22. That was a proposed rezoning of the Meyer property within Miami Township into a planned unit development district. The property is located in the northeast area of Miami Township, 5858 North Springborough Pike. The specific request is to rezone the 31.5 acre Meyer property into a special purpose planned unit development district. Again, the property is currently zoned in the B3 business district, sort of one of the most normalized business districts in the township. The property is located directly south of Alex Bell Road, directly to the east of Springborough Pike, St. 741. As part of any rezoning requests, there's always two major components, the actual preliminary plan and development standards, as well as the use compatibility with the area. First, we will rezone the specific preliminary plan and development standards. Again, the property is a little over 31 acres. In terms of existing site facilities, there's the existing Meyer store located on the right side of the image, the existing Meyer gas station located towards 741, and then lease area F in the southwest portion is a existing approved Big B Coffee. It was approved through the SPR process. It is not yet built, but is permitted at this time to go forward. We can discuss that a little more, but there are some issues with their start dates, and we can get into that. But beyond that, the Meyer property is proposing an additional five outlots. That would be business-type uses that are standard of the B3 district. They are also proposing a proposed EV charging station to be sited within the property. Part of the reason of going into the planned development in general, in discussion with staff, Meyer felt that they could, under the existing B3 district, parcel out the property and build under the SPR process, which is an AZRAI process, where they are able to build without special planned development approvals. With that being said, Meyer felt that a better product would be to come to a planned development with a preliminary plan that created a cohesive design for the entirety of this site, to lay it out at one time, figure out how best access would be given through the site, and get all approvals in this fashion, as well as create development. get all approvals in this fashion, as well as create development standards that they can then go back to, to come forward for final development plans for the individual components. So procedurally, again, it is a B3 zone, they were able to develop these business uses today. With that being said, we're asking for higher and better landscaping, higher and better building design, higher and better site design. So again, the purpose of the plan development written into the standards is to allow construction of these outlots using existing impervious surface rather than developing existing green space, which may be required under the B3 zone standards. But by developing these lots in accordance with the preliminary plan, there will be a cohesive site design rather than a scattered approach to redevelopment. So just to quickly pop through some of the individual outlots, generically speaking, the uses they're proposing are restaurant uses for A, B, and C, they've requested drive-through restaurant types. Outlot D, there is a automobile service station. Lot E, they're looking at a potential car wash. And then lot F is the Big B Coffee. They are writing this into the preliminary plan, but again, is already approved under the B3 standards. And then the final component is looking at placing an electronic vehicle charging station on the property. This is something that staff is working on with the zoning commission into drafting how this type of accessory use, or in some cases, potentially a primary use, are reviewed under the current existing zoning resolution. That has not yet been adopted into the code, but in a plan development, there is that flexibility to write exactly how we view electronic vehicle charging stations. So in this case, if it is a standard vehicle prohibited parking spot, that may not count towards a general site parking count. Similarly, any signage, lighting, or other associated structures would have to be reviewed as part of a full-site final development plan. And as is typical for a plan development, all development standards reference back to our code as a baseline of design, with some flexibility by the zoning commission and Board of Trustees to approve modifications for superior design. Reviewing the use compatibility itself, the plan prescribes land use review process. To quickly walk through that, the comprehensive plan designates the base layer as a commercial land use. Again, it is existing commercial, surrounded by some commercial, some office, some residential, so it is sort of a mix of land uses in the area, so particular consideration needs to be given. The zoning commission has recommended to how these land uses fit together. In terms of, again, independent subtypes, this is a more corridor commercial-type land use, not something that is necessarily an end destination, but has individual stores that are able to work together, oftentimes serving vehicular traffic. We'll talk about that in a moment as well, how the plan recommends that this be brought forward to better fit into the surrounding residential areas. In terms of land use impact, per ODOT, traffic impact study will be required. This is something that the zoning commission recommended as a stipulation of approval, that minor modifications to the interior of the site for stacking distances or turn-in lanes may be modified in response to any requirements from ODOT, but the applicant has stated that this will not be an issue, and they have started work in terms of getting materials prepared. The applicant also must work with ODOT and the TID, that should say, Montgomery County Engineers Office, that is my fault, to ensure that all infrastructure can handle the new traffic. Additionally, the zoning commission should focus on how these areas will impact surrounding uses. The zoning commission did recommend that in their stipulations, that as part of a final development plan, landscaping, fencing, grading, anything else be taken into consideration, how to minimize potential impacts to these land use neighbors. Development capacity for the site, again, it is currently a large, flat lot. There are three immovable stormwater basins. Montgomery County Engineers Office has stated that if these infrastructure areas are disrupted, full renovations would be required. Under the current proposal, they would be able to utilize the existing stormwater infrastructure. Another part of recommendation that come, that came from this, the zoning commission recommended that some additional landscaping, softscape be added to these areas to make them more attractive. They are certainly dated, there's large concrete channels that run through these areas that could be softened with natural grasses, other wetland areas that would work. This could also be reviewed as part of the final development plan. Again, in terms of capacity, there are dedicated turn lanes to all site entrances from 741 and Alex Bell Road. Looking at the vision for the site, how our individual plans interact here. In terms of infrastructure, again, the zoning commission has recommended that additional walkways be added to provide access from 741 and Alex Bell, to allow pedestrian bicycle traffic to access these lots. Health and wellness, again, improved pedestrian access is shown as part of the plan. These specific areas can be further expanded in the final development plan, along with existing stormwater detention basins, putting in measures to, again, increase the appearance, improve the appearance, but also, this would help manage stormwater pollutants. And then finally, adding additional tree island caps and additional landscaping through this very largely impervious site will help soften the site visually, but also will add shade to the lot, and will help reduce runoff water throughout the development. Sense of place, one recommendation, recommendation the zoning commission had was to have uniformed signage for the development, a common sign that all tenants in the area would be placed on. There is an existing Meyer pole sign on property that is non-conforming. If they however converted this to something that met the sign code, they could do so in a way that is much more attractive, creates uniform signage for the entire development, and makes it very clear where the development is. In terms of site sustainability, the plan recommends that additional density be added in areas where it is contextually appropriate. In this case, again, there is a large amount of impervious surface that could be better utilized rather than disrupting new greenfield sites. And finally, technology, looking at updating our regulatory standards, one area we are working on that is updated EV charging stations. In this case, they would be approved as part of the plan development. And then finally, how are the standards crafted to fit this site? The plan development standards are generally in line with what would be required otherwise. Again, however, we are granted some flexibility in reviewing these design criteria, references back to our lighting, landscaping, parking, site layout, noise regulations, and many other areas. Again, that was one area that the zoning commission particularly stressed was how this site, with its future development being adjacent to residential areas, will coexist. Part of that is looking at a full-site final development plan, where we can review potential modifications to site landscaping that could help buffer or screen in certain areas. Staff has received a number of complaints over the years between Meyer and some of the neighboring residences. Certainly, there are concerns with the loading dock being adjacent to a residential area. We, as staff, have not found anything that is a strict violation of our code. With that being said, Meyer has self- enacted a loading dock time restriction. They typically keep their deliveries from, I believe, at 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, I think, off the top of my head, but that may not be exactly accurate, but that is something that Meyer has chosen to do, to try to provide some assistance in terms of sound buffering. So just to quickly jump through all of the zoning commission stipulations, first one is to improve stormwater basin appearance. This could be done as part of a final development plan, would not require modification formally to the basins. Two, the zoning commission recommended that a common monument sign be enacted rather than the existing pole signs. Three, further explore the connective sidewalks, pedestrian cycling paths throughout the development, contingent on connections for approval from Montgomery County and ODOT. Four, developer must install additional landscape islands and end caps to complete driving avenues throughout the plan development. While they are adding many, there were areas that could be better translated into very clear drive aisles to navigate through the site. Five, decorative crosswalks must be included as part of a site-wide final development plan to create cohesion. The zoning commission felt that if we're doing this under plan development, additional cohesion could be obtained by adding common site elements. Six, final development plans may vary from preliminary plans in response to comments from Montgomery County and ODOT, directly related to an impact study. Bicycle racks should be installed on each site, again, to help create better connectivity throughout the site. Add additional landscaping or other accommodations to limit sound, light, and other impacts to surrounding residents. This would happen as part of multiple final development plan proposals. There would be a final development plan for the entirety of the site, excluding each outlot, and an additional final development plan for each outlot. At that time, all of our lighting levels and landscaping would be designed in a way that everything is placed to limit impact on neighbors, as is standard for most of our developments in a plan development. And nine, evaluate parking counts in order to include more tree islands as part of the final development submittals. As this is a preliminary plan, some of the square footages and parking requirements may change over time, and as available, to stop at a required parking level, the zoning commission has recommended that additional tree islands be placed to break up the parking field. Again, just to flip back, central to the site, there are very, very long swaths of unbroken concrete that could be improved over time. And those are all the zoning commission stipulations. If the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you, Board.
The Board will now hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Abby Jacobs. I'm with Wolpert. I'm a civil engineer who are at 1203 Walnut Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202, representing Meyer for this project. I don't have a lot to add to what Alex presented, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the proposed development.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Board will now hear from all proponents of the plan, that is, those speaking in favor of the plan. All right, the Board will now hear from all opponents of the plan. Again, please remind yourself, you have a five-minute limitation, and we need you to state your name and address as you approach the podium.
Hi, I am Joanne Adair, 5691 Cobblegate Drive. So I'm going to try to blow through this. I just want you to know, we're not opposed to the growth, but what we're asking for is, with that growth, that's also going to have a issue for our little neighborhood. I would like to see if it's possible that I can get one of those screenshots that you had up here, Alex, that showed the entire, no, there was a different one. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, well, that can kind of do. Okay, see the pink, that's actually Meyer. And then there's the green, right there, right below it, that's actually part of my community. I'm not sure why it's zoned, office use. That's actually residential, and some of my neighbors are actually here. And then the yellow part, that's actually Cobblegate Drive. The green part is Orchard Run Road. The residential, butts right up to that, and I have been one of the chasers of this, of the noise issue. What we're concerned about is, and what we're actually asking, is some of the issues of us as residents to be fixed for us before giving more approval for other things that will directly impact us in our future. I'm happy to hear that you mentioned this about making sure, you know, checking the roadways and things like that. That's promising, because it's getting more and more difficult to get out onto 741, sometimes even Alex Bell. But we also suffer from people cutting through because they're trying to avoid that, that corner there at Alex Bell and 741. So they cut through, and they're speeding. Not only are they speeding, but we have no streetlights through there, so it's very dark. And it seems kind of like every fall, when it goes, you know, dark earlier, then we have theft. We've had people breaking into mailboxes because our mailboxes are actually on the road. So with all of this traffic, that will probably create more to cut through our, we're hoping to keep peaceful community and safe, they're cutting through, they're speeding, because they're trying to barrel down Orchard Run to just blow around that curve and barrel down Cobblegate Drive, so they can get to Alex Bell and avoid all of that. So one thing is, is we're also asking for some streetlights, which would be from the township, to also give us some safety, okay? Another thing is, is that we're asking for is, I don't know what we can do to maybe stop some of these speeders. Now, I know some of this doesn't directly have to do with Meyer's, but technically it does, because we're that close. I have an email from somebody asking the same thing. She couldn't be here tonight, but she was concerned, depending on what some of the restaurants were that were going in, she was in fear of the fact that if it has a liquor license, what's going to happen? Are they going to start coming down our side street there and, and being drunk? We've already had that happen a while back, hitting a bunch of cars. I'm sorry to keep saying, I have just so many things coming to my mind, and I've got notes here, but when you mention about the, the health and the wellness of this project, does that include our community? Because we are really directly affected with this. The noise, for one thing, is an issue, and actually, by your 1972 rules, there's not supposed to be over 60 or 61 decibels, I believe. And I have an iPhone, and I downloaded the little decibel reader app, and I stood out on my deck one night with one of these really obnoxious trucks.
Mr. D, you only have about 30 seconds left, just want to make sure you're aware of your time.
Okay, well, we're, you see what we're asking for, and before approval, we would like to see some of these things addressed for sure and fixed before this approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Dean Dipmer. I'm at 5683 Cobblegate. And I have noticed exactly what Joanne just spoke of, and that is, we have a problem, and I'm not saying it's an issue, I'm saying it's a problem that needs to be addressed before anything proceeds any further. Because what Meyer tends to do is say, oh, okay, we'll fix this, or we'll do this, and we're sorry about the noise, or whatever, and nothing's ever done, okay? Yes, they did put in a loading dock time equation, and they're not following that. There's been several times I've been woke up by them dropping a truck, by them picking up one, or by the Thermakings running all night long, and it's a noise issue. I mean, and it's not something that you would like to live by, I'm sure, yourself. And then the thought of expanding, and, you know, and I kept on hearing during the presentation, you know, like landscaping to make it more nicer looking, et cetera, et cetera, but I heard nothing about trying to take the noise level down. I heard nothing about the fumes that we incur during the course of the night or day, nothing at all regarding that. And, you know, it's, it's just amazing, and, and I know that you don't know a lot of this, but we have went to Meyer's several times and addressed these issues directly with them, okay? And, oh yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Then they said, oh, well, we'll plant like 15 or 16 trees like this, okay? That really does not help the issue at all, at all, okay? And back to the speeding, if you sit, and your officers have, I've talked to Sergeant And back to the speeding, if you sit, and your officers have, I've talked to Sergeant McCarthy, Cardy, about this, same issue, coming around off of Orchard Run on the Cobblegate at like 50 miles an hour, I'll tell you what, one night or someday, a car's going to slide off and go right into a condo sitting on the corner. And then the next issue is leaving Orchard Run onto Alex Bell or leaving Cobblegate on Alex Bell, the traffic is going to probably double than what it is now, okay? And with that in mind, you can't hardly get out now. So unless that you plan on putting a four-way stop there or a lighting, you know, like you did up Austin Way, there's going to be a lot of accidents. Tonight, coming to this meeting, I had to turn right onto Alex Bell and then circle into Walgreens parking lot and then come back out so I wouldn't hit somebody trying to cross over. And, I mean, that, these situations are just going to be multiplied and multiplied because, you know, you're going to have much more traffic. Again, don't know what kind of, you know, establishments are going to be put in there, but on the same token, you know, another issue is trash. You know, people going up Orchard Run or people going down Cobblegate, throwing their trash out the window, okay? And here's an issue, too. When we call the police to report this, these issues, so often, we get a response, "Well, you know, that is commercial property. We don't really, you know, deal with that, or we don't do, you know, that's not our, you know, area to deal with." Well, that doesn't help us. So with this expansion, I'm not saying, you know, we can't do it, but I'm saying, you know, a lot more needs to be investigated and looked at than just the surface level of what you're looking at here today. I mean, a lot more in depth, and seriously. For example, to be honest with you, and I don't mean this negative, this letter that you sent out to the residents, it said the address. It did not say Meyer, you know, or did not even mention on there at all Meyer, you know. So those residents, they just thought it was a, you know, a commercial complex going down 741 or whatever. They didn't know for sure, and they didn't, you know, really look into it. But, you know, I've had several calls regarding that, that, you know, they really wasn't made aware of this scenario of it. And so, I mean, I know that you think...
We have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, my bottom line is, for the safety of people and for the safety of our residents, you guys need to do further investigation before moving forward. And Meyer will promise the moon and not deliver, and I've seen it many a time, so I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay, and if Shirley Almanowski was here, she would definitely be doing some research. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Pam Snowden, and I thank you for letting me speak tonight. I reside at 5696 Cobblegate Drive, and I've listened, you know, to the presentation. I came actually to a meeting back when their renovation was being planned and said, you know, along with Brenda Duran and members from Fox Hill, and we said, "Can you put up a sound fence, you know, some soundproof fence?" We were told that you guys wouldn't dictate to them the type of fence they could put up, but you would make them maintain it. And our concern was because we'd had nails take out one of our mower's, you know, tires, and after the renovation, we had tree limbs fall onto the fence. It took over a month to actually get those removed. This was before Dean moved in. Steve went over, Jim went over, they sent me over to talk about the tree limbs, and like I said, it was about a month before those tree limbs got lifted off of the fence. And now, I just wrote, you know, a couple of checks that included to put the fence back together where a tree has come through and where, you know, weeds and stuff have, and overgrowth has come through the fence. So they're not maintaining the fence, and I'm, are we supposed to then maintain whatever trees and, you know, foliage they do put up? We really want a soundproof fence. We want it taller. The speeding is an issue. I know Dean and Brenda have both called the township. You guys have, you know, went out and put up the lighted signs that tell people their speed when they're going through, but I have literally, this is a true confession, gotten past going like at 27 miles per hour, which is two miles per hour over, but I was literally passed going that on Orchard Run. And I've seen cars get passed doing the same on Cobblegate. And so I just, I hope that you really do consider making them, number one, put up a decent fence. You know, my parents both come from farming communities, and the condition of that fence would, in their mind, probably keep somebody out of heaven. I'm just saying. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else opposing the project?
So I promised I wasn't going to talk, but I just can't help myself. When you spoke about somebody...
Can you please tell us your name and address?
My name is Angela Jenkins, and I live at 2726 Orchard Run Road. And so unlike my neighbors, I don't have the butt of the grunt of the sounds, and I do appreciate the fact, I hear it from them, and I understand their concerns. I love my neighborhood. I moved to Orchard Run, and the one thing that I loved about it was because I said, "Oh, my gosh, if there's 10 feet of snow, I can walk to Meyer and Kroger and I don't have to worry about anything," right? And ask me how many times have I walked to Meyer and Kroger, and I haven't done it yet. So I actually have an appreciation for, you know, us building up our neighborhood, bringing up businesses, because we know when businesses die, so does the neighborhood, so does the property value. But we need to hold Meyer accountable for being a good neighbor to us, too. And so I don't need to repeat everything that was said, but being a good neighbor is part of being in our neighborhood and being partners with us, and I hope that we take that to heart, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in of opposition to the project? At this time, the Board of Trustees is required under Article 31, Section 3104 of the Miami Township Zoning Resolution to make specific findings of fact based upon the particular evidence at this hearing. The fiscal officer shall now read each standard and call the role to determine the finding of each trustee on the following standards.
The site will be accessible from public roads that are adequate to carry the traffic that will be imposed upon them by the proposed development standards. Where only the proposed uses and development standards are to be adopted and provides for pedestrian accessibility and connectivity throughout the design. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Any board comments on this finding?
The proposed development and/or development standards adequately address issues related to compatibility with adjacent uses, environmental issues, and overall design compatibility, including lighting and landscaping, and do so in a manner that improves upon what would be achieved under the non-PD zoning standards.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Any board comments on this standard?
I think this particular standard meets the crux of this case, whereas I think it was presented, this property is already Zone B3, and stepping it up to the PUD classification assigns additional restrictions and rules and regulations regarding buffering, health and safety, bike racks, all the things that were presented.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that comment, that this is already zoned in a manner that wouldn't have required approval here. You already heard about the Big B Coffee coming in without township approval, and I want to commend the township residents for coming in and sharing their opinions on this and encourage them to do so. This is a preliminary development plan, and there will be a final one, and restrictions are still in discussion as these. And I wouldn't stop here, I would go to the zoning commission meetings as well, to the extent that you're capable, to make sure they're the ones that make recommendations to us, and while we have the ability to modify those, starting there might give you better odds of getting exactly what you want. But again, I echo trustee Morris's comments that this is already zoned for this type of activity, and the PUD designation gives more ability for the township to impact this criteria as they come forward with final development plans.
The proposed development and/or development standards are intended to produce a superior design and construction than what would normally occur under the non-PD zoning standards and will not cause an undue burden on public services and facilities, including but not limited to fire and police protection.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Any board comments under this section?
The proposal is in accordance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Any board comments in connection with this section?
If the project is proposed to contain non-residential uses, the conditions imposed mitigate any potential significant impacts associated with the proposal, including maintaining a minimum 50-foot distance from retail, office, or other non-industrial business structures, or 100-foot distance from a manufacturing structure to a residential building outside of the planned development district, with a minimum of 30-foot property line setback for a retail, office, and/or non-industrial use, and 50-foot property line setback for manufacturing use, along with any property lines adjacent to a residentially zoned property.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Any board comments under this section? Thank you. I move to close the public hearing for zoning case number 457-2022, and find that all of the above standards were met by the evidence presented in the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 8022, a resolution to adopt a zoning map amendment from the B3 Business District to SP PUD, Special Purpose Planned Unit Development District, under zoning case number 457-22. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the zoning map amendment and the attached Exhibit A planned development standards under zoning case number 457-22, and upholds the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Department head comments?
Good evening, Board. I have one thing to bring to your attention, and I'm proud to announce that earlier last week, the Miami Township Police Department was notified by the Ohio Association Chief of Police, as well as the Ohio Law Enforcement Foundation, and we were selected to be the law enforcement agency for the state of Ohio for the month of September of 2022. That made me feel extremely proud, and what pushed this township police department to achieve this status, they specifically spelled out our outstanding community policing efforts. So those that know me know that I place community in high esteem here. I believe in servant leadership, and this made me feel extremely proud of my police department of this township for achieving this type of award from such a highly decorated police agency within the state. So I just wanted to make the township aware of that, and I wanted to congratulate the men and women of the Miami Township Police Department for this accomplishment. It was a big, big award for the police department.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Mr. Schweickert, anything memorable to report?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Carlson?
I have no comments, thank you, Board.
Mr. McCord?
I don't have any other.
Administrator Snyder?
I'd just like to, again, welcome Officer Cook and Officer Dalton to Miami Township. We're certainly pleased to see their commitment and desire to serve the community as police officers, and we're glad to have them here, as well as to congratulate our newest sergeant, Sergeant Miller, for rising to that position, so.
Thank you, Administrator Snyder. Elected official comments? Mr. Newell?
I have none.
Mr. Culp?
I have none.
Mr. Morris?
I'd just like to thank the residents who brought forth the issues before us today. I think a lot of the things that they expressed are critically important. We always want to be aware of these issues. Unfortunately, streetlights, speeding, drunk driving are not, were not specifically germane to the case we heard in zoning, but I would encourage our chief to look into some of the data collection and some of the things that this township has already invested in for speed sensing. Let's get some data and find out what the speeding on that road is, and look into possibly traffic calming devices and stricter enforcement as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Again, I want to thank everybody that came out to speak today. I know that it takes time out of your day to come down here, and I believe that some of you have brought these issues to our notice before, and I don't view township resident complaints as a negative. I think they're helpful. It's too often in zoning cases that the issues that people are coming in speaking about, this is the first time they've been complained about, especially as it pertains to an existing business. And so communicate with your township officials, the administrator and his staff, do what they can to understand, investigate, and determine whether your issues are something the township can address, and Chief Stigelmeier will do the same to the best of his abilities. And so, again, I would just like to thank you for coming out and making your voices heard today because we don't know how to make these decisions without them. The planned unit development we voted on today, I think, is an improvement over our capabilities than the currently existing zoning, but I encourage you to keep participating in this process as it rolls forward.
We have no work session, and at this time, I will make a motion that we adjourn into executive session to consider confidential information relating to marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to conduct negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G8. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
The official time for the record?
7:07 p.m.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
We will be adjourning into executive session, and members of the public are not invited into that meeting, unfortunately. We will be conducting no further business after that executive session, and we'll adjourn the meeting from the executive session without conducting any further business. Thank you for being here today.